Proper noted. Oh.
Sorry.
No, that's perfect. All right, notice is hereby given pursuant to section 20 of the municipal home rule law of the state of New York that a public hearing will be held by the board of trustees of the village of Boston Spa on February 12th, 2024 at 7:01 PM at the Boston Spa Public Library located at 21 Milton Avenue, Boston Spa, New York and at 321 South Ocean Boulevard, Highland Beach, Florida simultaneously for the purpose of considering the adoption of local law number one of 2024. If adopted, local law number one of 2024 would add chapter 150 Parks to the code of Village of Boston Spa. Parks are permitted to, excuse me, public are permitted, public are permitted to attend and provide comments at either above location pursuant to open meetings law 103 and via live stream link assumed. Written comments of the on local law number one of 2024 can be submitted to the village clerk up to and through the time of the public hearing. A copy of proposed local law one of 2024 can be obtained at the village offices and on the village website. Are there any, I guess Frank, let me know if there's anyone there who's going to speak. I doubt it, but.
I've seen no hands.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Ms. Marilyn first?
Marilyn Stevenson, 45, West High Street. I find it interesting that we're doing a public hearing on this local law for the parks. At the same time, we're also considering changes, edits to our zoning law. There are some sections here that kind of correlate with both, but I'll share my comments on proposed local law number one, 2024, Village of Boston Spa Parks Code. I'm disappointed that the trustees are considering allowing the use of alcoholic beverages in any village park or park facility. I would appreciate an explanation from the trustee who is responsible as the liaison to the Park and Tree Board. Please explain how this issue of alcohol use came to be proposed in this code and who does this benefit? I'm opposed to subsection 150-6, the special permit required for alcoholic beverages in this proposed code. Our parks and recreational areas are small in scale compared to other communities. In addition to recreational opportunities, our parks provide the only green space and shade in a treeless Front Street Central Business District. They provide wildlife habitat for birds and pollinators. The tree shrubs and flowers in Whizwall, Iron Spring Garden, Kelly Park, and Woods Hollow beautify our landscape. Parks serve as buffers to stormwater runoff and stream flooding. Most all of our recreational activities in the village are passive except for the pool and the playground at Kelly Park. Most of the people using the parks are kids and their families. So the introduction of alcoholic beverages even under a permitted paper trail of applications, permits, liability insurance certificates, certificates and self-serving signed statements creating, creates a dangerous precedent for the Village of Friends. Other than pressure from outside special interests, I cannot imagine why any existing licensed brewery, restaurant, or bar in the village would want this activities in the Village of Boston Spa Parks. Are the village trustees willing to assume the liability of increased enforcement of open container laws, DUIs, public intoxication, rowdy behavior, and on other unsavory characters? If you've ever walked out of this meeting and walked past Whizwall Park after one of these late night meetings, you know there are people in the park smoking, not just cigarettes, drinking, sleeping. I've seen it. It happens during the daytime, too. We have so many good restaurants who have liquor licenses and are fully capable of monitoring the sale and consumption of alcohol within their own establishments. Leave the liquor in those establishments and keep the liquor out of the village parks. Another comment on the proposed code subsection 150-3, paragraph F, use of the parks and facilities are at the risk of the user, and I'm paraphrasing what's in that code. Is there, is that posted at each park site advising the public that they're using village property at their risk? So if a park facility has a hazard, known or hidden, especially one that was created by lack of inspection, lack of maintenance by the village, the village will still maintain that they are not liable for injuries while the public is using our parks? What does the village attorney in our village insurance carrier say to that part of the code? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Liz?
Two Lizzas.
Hi, I've never talked before, so please bear with me as I get nervous. Liz Biddle, 113 Fairground Ave. I'm actually speaking on behalf of the BSVPAM secretary. So first I, most of our things are questions. Are you guys allowed to answer our questions or do I just say our questions?
I think because it's a hearing, we'll.
You can ask questions and then afterwards.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. BSVPAM stands as a voice for our business community and would like to advocate for clarity on the proposed changes to the Boston Spa Park Code. Whizwall Park is the center of our business district and we want to ensure our community continues to flourish with these changes. That said, we have some questions to make sure we understand the code and can communicate correctly with our BSVPAM members. So firstly, in several sections, 150-3E and 150-4, for example, it states an adoption of a fee schedule for permits. Currently, there is no fee to host or an event, to host an event in the park. Is there an intention to make a fee for events? If so, how much and which events would it apply to? Secondly, in 150-5D13, does not, it does not allow for parking in non-parking areas. Also states exceptions must be preauthorized. Does this mean that if it's in our permit, we're allowed to have vendors park on the grass? So we're thinking in terms of like number three, in 150-5D16, there's quite a bit of concern about this from a few members. It states that the park cannot be used for private profit or a charge of private fee. For the farmer's market, we require the vendors to be members, which requires them to pay a fee. Would this section of the code apply to the farmer's market or any other event that charges a fee for a vendor spot such as the car show or some of our members do a summer kickoff and they're wondering about that? Next, in 150-520, it states permission is required to advertise in the park. Would the BSVPAM be able to get permission to advertise for all of our events, like in general, since it states a written notice can be provided annually? Could we just send you one notice that we're going to advertise in the park for like a whole season? And last, there seems to be a lot of things that require permission through a permit and will the general event form be updated to make it easier to comply with all the restrictions? That's just a general question.
Thank you.
Liz Carmos, 89. Hi, I thought Liz's comments were quite good. My only comment is on 150-6. I'm a little bit nervous on the use of alcohol, particularly since in section A, you just say use of alcohol, whereas in section B, you say beer and wine. You know, if we're going to allow the possession, consumption, and sale of beer and wine, then we should not say alcohol because that would be other products. One question might be though, that I think at the farmer's market, there have been local distillers who sell or give a sample and you may want to allow for that. That's basically sale of it, but not consumption. You know, you can work that out. Also, I think, given the sensitivity of the use of alcohol or beer and wine, to just submit an application to the village clerk, I don't think is sufficient because I'm not sure the village clerk has the authority or should frankly be given the authority to make such a decision. I think that belongs with the board. Traditionally, the board has always decided on events. I can see regular events that we've done before, farmer's market stuff, maybe being given to the clerk to, you know, just give out the form and do that, but I wouldn't give the whole, the whole approval process, particularly if you're going to keep allowing alcohol because what if somebody comes, you know, wants to throw a 500-person party in Whizwall Park with free beer or free alcohol? That's probably not something the board would do when you want to put that on the clerk to make that decision. You know, so that's, that's basically, you know, my comment to, you know, distinguish on what type of alcohol and, you know, on the approval. Thank you.
Anyone online? Oh, great. Sorry.
Riyadh and 16 Midwork Avenue. I did read through the park code. My comments tonight would be, first of all, about the safety and adaptability for those people that have special needs. In going through the, especially Kelly Park, in the trails there, there's a lot of places there where people with mobility issues are going to have a problem walking through the way it is now. And who is responsible for bringing that up to a manageable level, up to a point where people with disabilities can go through and enjoy the trails? There's a lot of drop offs. There's a lot of mud pits, if you will. Last year, as I was going through, I pulled down a noose that had been hanging up in the tree. I was able to finagle my way through and pull it off the branch. So even kids going through, somebody could have been hurt badly. I guess the enforcement is the part that I'm looking at. Who's responsible for keeping, for the upkeep of the trails and the other areas there, plus, you know, the safety aspect of it and how often is it going to be inspected? The other thing I've asked before, and I'd like to see it continue or be put in place, is signage. It should be part of the code that the signage would be maintained for the trails, for the parks, for the items that are available to the public. You go down there now, where's, is there a dog park? Who knows? Because there's no signs at the front of the park or anywhere in the park other than on the fence that say dog park. So people don't know and they let their dogs run free. So if we're going to have no, you know, a leash law there, they should know that there's a dog park where they can let their dogs run free. They don't know where the Romano Trail is. It says Romano Trail, but there's not another sign that says anything about, you know, this way, an arrow, anything. The signage is important. And if there's going to be specific areas where people can use different parts of the recreational areas, they should be marked much better. So that's, that's mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So we have someone online?
Yep.
Hi, this is Nathan Ward from One Hyde Boulevard. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Just one or two comments. Section 150, Tac 5D21, it says no bicycling in the park. Now, I was just wondering if you're riding your bike to the park and where you, you know, lock up your bike, is that allowed? Or is it, like, for example, if there was something in Kelly Park, would you have to get off your bike right away? And then if the bike rack was far away, would you have to walk it there? So maybe allow an exception to ride it to the place to lock up your bike? And then I think the, the use of the alcohol portion of the code would create, you know, a lot of, you know, interesting events such as, you know, Oktoberfest. I believe the wording could be tightened up to, you know, prevent things that we don't want. So, yeah, that's all I have. Thanks.
Yeah. Anyone else? All right. May I have a motion to close the public hearing? Second, please?
Make sure you state the time.
Oh, thank you, Frank. 7:18. Second, please?
Yeah, can you have your sign up?
No, I was speaking.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay. Thank you all.
And Liz Biddle, you can answer questions when we get to that point.
Yeah, when you talk about the discussion of the law.
Yeah.
When is that? After speaker?
After you, you speaker, and then you do a motion for the adoption. All right. May I have a motion that the minutes of the January 27th meeting be approved?
Oh, my God.
Thank you. All second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes? Motion passes? All right, we have presentations. Oh my gosh, my brain is drawing up like right now. Thank you, Colleen. So sorry. It's funny I don't know you. We see each other regularly. Colleen from BACC is coming up and she wanted to present some information to us and glad to have her here.
Thank you. Glad to be here. So I just wanted to come tonight to kind of check in and talk a little bit about some of the different things that we did in 2023 and some of the new things that we're going to be doing in 2024. So I have copies of these to provide. They were also in the minutes, so I don't know if you all want to look at them while I'm talking or not. Thank you. Just so that if you have any questions or comments as I'm going through. So really what the impact report goes over is all of the different things that we did in the past year. We served over 1,100 people and we have a lot of new and exciting things that are happening at the center. So something that we are currently working on with the Boston Spa Middle School for the Community Project is expanding our preteen and teen operations. So we're hoping to really get that fully underway in the fall. We're working with them right now, doing surveys and coming up with lots of great ideas. There is a bit of a gap in our community for that age, so we're hoping to provide a safe, fun experience for those that kind of fall in between, I can't quite work yet, I can't drive, but I have no place else to hang out. So we are renovating our space and we are hoping to get all of that kind of in place before the end of this full year to really launch in September and be that great resource. So also, right now, we're providing our VITA program. That's a free tax program for anyone in the community that is disabled, earns under $60,000 a year. So you can call, you can make an appointment. We have in person and remote. So you can just drop off your paperwork, come back, pick it up, we'll review it with you and sign. It's very easy and again, it's free. So in the impact report from last year, it talks about a lot of great things that we did. But really, we're trying to focus on moving forward, expanding and adding more services. We really want to hear from the village and all of other stakeholders about what you all want. Adult programming, senior programming, more teen and youth programming. We want to be a place where everyone can come and have a space and have a purpose. So with that in mind, we're actually partnering with Alliance Club and by the end of this week, we'll be pushing out all the information. We're going to hold a volunteer fair at the community center. It is March 2nd from 12 to 4. There's going to be registration. Anyone that needs volunteers, you can register. It's free to register. We are going to try to meet everyone's need for tables, set up, all that stuff. And we're going to do it right at the community center and hopefully get a lot of good volunteers for the village and our area. Does anyone have any questions? I know that's a lot.
No questions, but Colleen, thanks for everything folks do. I always hear requests from folks about, hey, you know, we need help getting usage of the BACC gym and you're always sort of tried to do what you can. And I know it's not always possible. I know girls wrestling right now is looking for space. So I know they're probably hitting you up for that as well, but really do appreciate everything you do for us in the community.
Thank you. And we do really try to provide low cost or free programs. That's really the main purpose.
Yeah, I want to echo that. My, both my kids went to BACC and it's a great resource for this community. It really helps parents out and allows us to go to work and we know that they're having a quality time while they're there. So thank you for doing that. That's affordable. One question that has come up in passing here is interest in doing emergency planning. And your organization is an emergency designated emergency shelter. Have you had planning discussions or conversations with like the Saratoga County people or anyone else?
The town of Milton has a disaster preparedness team that we would mobilize with them in the event that they needed the center, but I do think that that's something that the village, you know, might want our participation. And if you were looking at developing that because we are the largest space, I think we have over 200 capacity and then we have separate classrooms and bathrooms. So we really can accommodate families, special needs, all that stuff. We have the backup generator. So you can pretty much do anything from there.
And you and your board are oriented and have to see then how that all would be activated.
Yes. Yep. Yes. Yep. I'm actually, so as part of my role, I've worked with the disaster preparedness team to be up to date on everything that they're doing so that in the event something happens, there's kind of a chain of notification and commands and all that stuff for everyone to mobilize.
Great. And when you talk about teams, that's the Milton and county?
Yep. Yeah.
Colleen, you said you want ideas about, you know, what this community is looking for. How would people get that information or ideas to you?
So right now, we are looking at trying to push out a community survey. We just got through the process with that preteen teen group. We targeted grade six through nine. So once we finish that process, we'd like to try to do something, not as comprehensive, but something where the community can respond. So something posted on social media, our website, things like that, to be able to easily give feedback, but also you can always call, stop in, email me, really anyway, but we're really trying to be more visible and more present so that people can give us that feedback.
Let us know when you get to that point.
Yeah.
I'm sure you'd be willing to make sure that's all.
Yeah. And especially for the summer months, I feel like there's a lot of opportunity at the center, especially adult wise. And we have a volleyball net now, so we can do an adult volleyball league. There's all sorts of fun stuff that we think we could provide to the community that we just aren't really tapping into. So we just need to see on a scale from one to 10, how important would that be or how much involvement that we get? So, yeah, adult rugby. Bring them back.
Keep them back.
Yeah.
Anyone else have questions?
I was just going to say, we're going to lean on you too, because when we get to the point where pickleball and basketball become functional at Kelly Park, it'll be useful to know how you keep a good scheduling system, et cetera, and, you know, make that all work. So I'll be tapping you for that.
Absolutely.
Awesome. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. You can hang out.
I have to look at my daughter from volleyball.
Oh, sounds convenient. Thank you for being here. All right, let's, we'll move to public comments on agenda items only. Each speaker gets three minutes. All right. Anybody in the public have anything they want to talk about on the agenda?
Donna Martin, 20, just to report Boston Spa. I just was curious about the selection on seven or 625 at the firehouses. What, what is it? Oh, primary elections. Okay. No question. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone online?
Hi, One Hyde Boulevard. I just had a, a comment on the monster truck event. I, I, was this event done last year? And if so, I do remember it being very loud, very late at night. So I'm not against having the event. It's just if we allow it, just maybe cap the time that the loud part of the event is, you know, have that before X time, like nine o'clock because, you know, people are sleeping. Thanks.
Thank you.
It's 113 Fairground Ave. Yeah, I agree with Nathan. We can cap the time definitely. It's very loud. I live right across the street. Thanks.
It says in the motion 9:00 PM. Is that too late?
I like 8:30 better. I get bedtime, but you know, I compromise. Fun is not time.
Anyone else? All right. All right, closing the public comment. Sorry. Apparently, I'm questioning everything I remember from our meeting. All right, we're moving to the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be taken off that and for further discussion for later in the agenda? All right, may I just have a motion to approve the items of the following consent agenda? It's one through five. All right. That's why I gave you like if you weren't removing something for discussion purposes.
Okay.
Do you want to?
No.
Okay. Yeah. No. All right. So all in favor? Okay. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Um, all right. We have motions, resolutions for consideration to, for vote. How are we going to do this? Well, I can read the. Seeker first. Do that part, if you want to mine. So you all have before you parts two and three of the EA after seeker. As we've done in the past, I've taken the liberty of identifying that there will be no or minimal impact, no or small impact, I think that is for question one through 11. If you would like, I can go through each question and ask for the board to give me a consensus or we can, you can take what I have on there and adopt it as such. That's board's pleasure. Has everybody had an opportunity to review it? Yeah, go for it, I think. So then if you go to part three, part three just indicates that the, there's no significant environmental impact and you're willing to issue a negative declaration.
and you're willing to issue a negative declaration.
Frank, can you hear me? Hi Frank. Part three indicates, um, that there's no significant environmental impact by the adoption of the local law. Is that what the board's desire is? Okay, if that's the board's desire, then the negative declaration, um, part is within the adoption resolution. But since there was some public comment here, I would propose that you at this time make a separate, uh, resolution issuing a negative declaration.
They have a motion for a negative declaration for the seeker. Thank you, Ben. All in favor?
That should be a roll call.
Roll call, okay. Alright.
Doesn't have to be.
Thank you. Trustee Baskin? Trustee Van Neta?
Yeah.
Trustee Price Bush?
Aye.
Trustee Raymond?
Aye.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes.
So seeker is complete now. And the next idea, item for the board would be to, um, make a motion to adopt the resi- make a motion to adopt the resolution which would adopt local law one of 2024. Uh, you would make the motion, second the motion, and then there can be discussion based on the public comment or any other comments.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? Last time I had the gavel. Any discussion?
Yes, uh, I, I think we owe it to, uh, give some answers to the questions that we were hearing along the way. So if you, uh, you allow me, uh, to the degree I remember them and if Liz Biddle's, uh, handy there, I may need her to, uh, jog my memory on a couple of things she brought up. But in general, the alcohol situation is actually based on BSBPA members' requests with respect to SLA permits that they're allowed to use, I think five per year for outside events that they were not able to utilize in their own village, uh, for events at parks, et cetera. And so that's what the genesis of that was. Uh, for instance, um, boy, uh, Mike, uh, was actually instrumental in pulling me aside two, uh, summers ago, uh, to discuss, uh, the issue, the concerns about that. And so we have to manage it in an equitable way when we're doing the law, as Carla can, uh, assure us on that. But, uh, at the same time, uh, we're trying to ensure that the SLA permit is what is required for what is being envisioned there. And basically existing SLA permit holders are the ones that are going to be able to effectuate that situation. Uh, or authorized vendors, uh, outside vendors that have a reputation. And I, from just my own representation back when of some folks as an attorney, I could tell you the SLA takes that extraordinarily seriously and does not just hand out those permits willy nilly. Uh, they'll often go to the last minute before an event even occurs to issue it, uh, with the concerns. I've seen it myself, Carla had given us that insight as well during some of our discussion on this. Uh, so there's that, uh, part of it, uh, in, uh, with respect to, uh, Ray. Ray, this is more a usage, uh, code than a maintenance code. And obviously it is up to the village to maintain. So when there are concerns, defect complaint form is a good place to, uh, begin, uh, to notify us of what's going on. Jennifer and Terry and Bob and I all get those. And Jennifer is the, uh, resource to get over to Jeff and the DPW crew, uh, and to Dave Bush, uh, and the police when there's an issue, uh, such as either vagrancy or, uh, conditions of park, uh, situations developing in parks. So that, that just is a standard anyway, uh, that wouldn't be embraced by this code. With respect to signage, it is in there, uh, and it's authorizing signage to be, uh, utilized. And, uh, essentially we'll create a schedule of parks and also indicate where certain activities are allowed or disallowed. Nathan, with respect to bicycles, you can bike in a loud area. So a parking lot is obviously an allowed area if a vehicle can, uh, get into it in Kelly Park. If you're walking up your bicycle to a bike rack, obviously you're not riding the bike in the park, so you're fine. Uh, there's obviously going to be some, uh, you know, give and take in a scenario like that. We're just saying, don't ride it through the whole darn thing. And, you know, risk running people over there just trying to be pedestrians inside a park. Uh, with respect to, um, the, uh, Liz, you had other things too.
Victim vendors, so your question was, I specifically asked Carla the wording. I was like, wait, that's not what my intention was at least. Uh, that wording would allow farmer's market vendors, it would allow the summer kickoff, you know, would it impact? And then my other question was, well, when it's, because the summer kickoff, you know, what's the word, flowed over into Low Street, right? And I, well, is that permitted? And it would be permitted as long as we prove that event. Um, signage similarly, I think that is an issue of like getting, um, the application adjusted, um, for events. So you guys usually file for farmer's market and all that. So really the intention was not to negatively impact what you guys are doing. It was actually to give more flexibility. As far as the schedule, I, I mean, I, I can only speak for myself. I don't necessarily want to have a schedule, but I, I don't, I think you just have to put it in code.
Well, I think a couple that we are able to do, uh, so by putting that in code, we can make the changes as we need to make them, much like the sidewalk reimbursement is actually literally in the code. And to change the number that's in the code, we'd actually have to do a code change and go through all the rigmarole that you watch us do for things like this right now. Whereas in having a schedule means that we could have it at zero dollars, but later on we could change it. But also here's a couple of things that we realized as we were doing a lot of this stuff. First, there is no codification at all for anything we were doing. There just wasn't really anything that was a law embracing the process that we're utilizing, especially for things like DPW hours or police hours necessary for an event. And so what this, this is attempting to do is allow us to explain better to people that want to hold events, what their obligations are going to be. We can still waive it as a board in cases where, uh, we feel that it needs to be waived for a certain reason and done consistently, obviously in that realm. But we're not trying to create bigger hurdles. Uh, you, I, I think for special events, uh, permits for things that require the alcohol scenario, because there might be a little bit more minutia, uh, behind getting that together. There may be a slight fee for something like that, but that is something we can discuss in a future resolution that will appear before the board and the public, uh, at another meeting. So right now there is no intent, direct intent to create any abnormal fees. We're just trying to figure out ways to make sure we can manage what is a normal process that we've been doing all along, but officially in the law finally, which it wasn't there.
I just want to, I assume it's not, okay. Um, I just wanted to explain the whole idea, um, and I think Marilyn, you, you brought it up that, I think, the concern, nope, it was Liz who brought up the concern with having the village clerk be the one who determines the alcohol permit. That's not what's happening. What's happening is the state liquor authority determined the alcohol permit. So in order for the, the individual, the event to have an alcohol permit, and it, it's actually literally called a beer and wine, temporary beer and wine permit. That's what it's called. It, it's allowed beer, wine and cider. That's what's, um, in that permit. In order to get a special event permit from the village, you have to have the SLA license first. So, um, and the SLA does go through a, a rigmarole of everything you have to do and above and beyond anything that the village would ever require. So this board was, did discuss that, you know, should it be the clerk? Should it be the full board? Who should it be? And the idea was the state actually was doing this. If you can produce what the state gave you as a license, that should be sufficient for the village. And it allow, and a lot of times these licenses, and I've just, I've done it and you get them like 24 hours before an event if you're lucky. So it would be almost impossible to get the 24 hours beforehand, call a special meeting, have a board approve it. So the idea was to rely on state. Um, and then as long as you meet everything else in there and you have your state, your state license, then the clerk can sign off on that. And if the clerk is concerned, she always has the ability to contact the board and go, hey, something, something seems iffy here. I don't know if that explains it, but I didn't know if any, everybody understood that really the state is the one granting the license for the alcohol. And they, they are very rigid in what they do. I'm not saying that they're perfect because they're the state, but, um, they are much more rigid than the village would be. So that was the idea behind, though, my husband works with it, I can say that. That was the.
Priceless.
That was the idea that this board came up with. And I hope that explains a little bit more of that. It's not Terry making the decision who gets to drink or not.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I brought that up as an issue a couple of weeks ago. I mean, I recognize that the state, um, from afar will approve the general functioning. Um, they obviously, uh, are not inspecting our particular property and, uh, what the resources are required to ensure a safe event, um, from the village perspective. So, um, I still have concerns with, um, the level of review for alcoholic events, which are brand new to this village. Um, and I think there's still inconsistencies in general with when the board approves, what they board approves and what, when the clerk will approve. So there's references to, uh, 150, that's four written permit issued by the village, well, so clerk. And then down below. Uh, let's see, D4, uh, reference carrying or having possession while in village park. Any, uh, glass containers, vows, uh, unless specifically approved by permit from the village board of trustees. So they're the board of trustees. Making or causing loud noise or music in or on product property, park facilities in such manner that disturb, et cetera. Uh, unless specifically approved by permit from the village board of trustees. That's number five, number six, possessing or using explosive fireworks, rockets, et cetera. Uh, unless specific, these are, these are things that are, are not permitted unless, uh, specifically approved by permit from village board trustees. I'm looking at the track changes that you sent us. This is the last track changes that you sent us on Friday. So is there something that was sent that is different than the track changes? You sent us a clean, a clean copy that assumed.
With the seeker.
Was the, was the track changes.
Every second is the draft, that's the operable draft.
Correct, what I'm saying is, um, I think you're reading the wrong number.
Track changes is brown band A because it causes bullets to move.
Maybe, so track changes, it says February 2nd. So that's the, I'm looking at a February 2nd draft where you sent both the track changes and the clean copy together.
I want to make sure we're reading, so for example, same spot. Number five, I have D5 being possessing and or using explosives. And you said that was D6. I just want to make sure.
Here, see, it looks like five is crossed out and it says six. Oh, somehow number one was actually crossed, it starts at two for some reason.
Track changes and bullet numbers are notoriously an issue.
So, um, anyway, there's a bunch of things that reference permit by the board of trustees. Uh, parking the vehicles, you know, must be pre-authorized by those board. And, uh, what else, selling, vending, conducting exclusive private businesses, a pri- private business. You know, not allowed unless approved by permit of the village board. So some things say, you know, by permit, some say approval by boards. And we have the alcohol, which is just the clerk. And, um, I don't mind, I, I just think we have some inconsistencies here in the level of review. I don't know that each of these things that is not permitted needs to be reviewed and approved specifically by the board. Um, but the thing that does stand out, oh yeah, maintaining a fire open flame cannot, is not allowed without a special permit issued by the village. Uh, planting trees is not allowed unless approved by the village board of trustees. There's not a permit, but it's approval.
So basically, Ben, any act that's an illegal act that we are going to have to give an authorization because the clerk can't tell somebody, go ahead and have an exception to the law, is something the board's going to have to approve. Anything that is permissible with either a permit or by right, uh, signage, permit for alcohol that's given by the state ultimately, et cetera. Those are things that are given over to the clerk to, uh, basically rubber stamp at that point because they've gone through something that is permissible and, uh, a special process has already been laid out for what they need to do. And she's well versed in handling that situation. She does it anyway now, we're just codifying this and adding more specificity on alcohol. But things like explosives, it's illegal, uh, under this. So she can't give an authorization, we can as the board. That's the distinction here that's being made. Carla, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, that's what we discussed. And I, and I, I know that this board, uh, did discuss, you know, not discuss this, but went through this and added, um, to almost everything indeed. Um, when there was a requirement to have it done by either permit or permit or approval from the village board of trustees. So I think the only inconsistency, and I just want to make sure I'm in the inconsistency is that the alcohol doesn't require board of trustees. Everything else does.
Right, and, and but even the mechanism within the board of trustees process is not consistent in terms of is it a permit or, and, or left un, unspoken exactly how it's approved. But it, since other things are by permit, it implies, oh, maybe there's a permit process, so.
The word permit is both a verb and a noun, Bren, so you're getting confused. The word permit is both a noun and a, uh, verb also. So some cases you're going to say, I have to permit you to do something. In other cases, you say you have to get a permit to have this happen. So when in doubt, the, in this whole thing, when you're saying the board permits, it means allows. Uh, usually the wording for a physical permit is obtain a permit, uh, through the.
So it, it sounded like number 17 or 18, uh, fire open flame. It, I mean, I, I get what you're saying, it said without a special permit issued by the village. So it's out there. Um, there's another place where it'll say, unless specifically approved by permit from the village, which also implies it's a, some kind of noun, by permit from. Um, so I'm fine, uh, I guess having the board continue to, uh, monitor those activities that are illegal otherwise. Um, but, um, but we haven't had sort of a permit process before. It was really just coming to the board and you make a motion, you know, somebody asks permission and then you have a motion related to that. So if there's a permit process, I guess we should just be clear on that or not. Um, and maybe just say with approval of the board. But, um, I am still concerned, as I mentioned, um, that whole explanation of like, it's illegal, um, you know, it didn't come my way, but it's good to hear now. Um, but I am concerned, uh, with new events that haven't happened and particularly the alcohol. And I would like to see, um, a, a higher level of review. Um, or at least something that's spelled out in terms of who reviews in addition to the clerk. Um, is DT, do we need DPW review? Do we need police review and/or do we need, uh, board review? Uh, what would be the thresholds for different kinds of events requiring different levels of review? Um, so here we have alcohol and, um, I would suggest that, and, uh, uh, even though I know the state has their requirements that, um, it's in our little village and our little park, that the, um, board of, uh, trustees also review those kinds of, of events. And, um, as I suggested, um, I thought, you know, whenever there's a first time event, I would suggest the, that's new and it's different than something we've ever done before, I would suggest that it comes to the board for review. If there's been events in the past that have been successful, non-problematic, it's more routine, the clerk can just issue that. Um, but I, I guess I remain concerned with just the, 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 what I see as inconsistencies and also that, um, a higher level of review for new events, especially if they're alcohol related. Is what I would, uh, suggest.
When you receive an event, I'm sorry, just say, uh, ask the clerk since, uh, we're kind of speaking with her, sitting right next to you there, Sean. Uh, but Terry, when you see an event come through, uh, that raises concerns about possible need for police or review for police or just, uh, alert for police to be, uh, on the lookout for and or, what is your process generally as it stands right now?
I would talk with Chief Bush and or Jeff Borries if necessary.
And so, I'm sorry, Sean, Sean wanted to say.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was catching up on some of the emails that have gone back and forth today. And also I was out of town this past weekend, but I was thinking about this. And one of the things that occurred to me today was things that aren't already pre-programmed into our budget, particularly larger gatherings that may require more than one department. I would assume that we would have to do board approval because that's a budgetary expenditure of, you know, if they're going to do work or if they have to do traffic control or provide, the police need to provide enforcement. That would automatically require board approval.
Just to be clear on what we were saying earlier, when it goes into schedule, the schedule's going to basically state that the responsibility for any police presence in DPW hours will be on the, the event holder or a person asking for the permit. And in the situations where they want to get a waived, obviously they got to come before the board. So the board's going to have the say in that respect. If they're willing to pay and the police and or DPW are willing to provide the services essentially and put a price tag on what those services are going to be, then it's up to them to pay it. It'll be baked into the fee basically through the fee schedule when we get to it.
Then practically, when, when I think about how this might play out, any, any sort of event. I think the issue here, which Carla alluded to, New York State, they have a process. It is very difficult even for businesses to get approvals for liquor licenses and such. They do come in at the eleventh hour, working in a legislator's office, we would often get calls, my license isn't in yet. So it does kind of come in quick. But what I think in practicality is going to happen, these beer garden sort of things aren't going to be attached by its own thing. It's still going to be attached in the back. So we will have that approval process of an event. I, I think the question is that we can make it part of the application. Do you intend to, you know, pursue a beer garden approach? Then here is this process. We will not allow you to do it unless you were able to get XYZ, which is outlined in the code. I, 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 this is not the way I read it, Frank. I'm
What are you saying? Are you saying all events are going through the clerk and not the board?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
I'm asking.
No, no, no. You're not hearing what I'm saying. So when the BSBPA comes to us and says, we're going to do farmers markets or, you know, whatever events they come, it still has to come before us for approval.
Is that in this law?
But yeah.
Where is it in the law that says that?
Maybe I'm confused too now, but.
I mean, I'd be okay with that. Or if it's a routine event that always had like farmer's market, I'm also okay not seeing those. But I don't see in the law that those events come to us or not. It's sort of silent.
We, we currently don't approve permits for Kelly Park Pavilion usage, you realize. There's a process that we've been utilizing. It's technically not codified for deposits and cleanup. Ultimately refundable deposit. It, it's managed by the clerk. We never see them.
I'm okay with that level of use with the clerk. And I guess if they're, they're drinking out, well, there's no alcohol allowed without, I guess.
That's the one place in the code where alcohol is allowed is Kelly Park technically in.
That's in there? Where is that?
It's, uh, boy, I will find.
Yeah, okay. Carla, would you mind, this is waiting on up here. You can borrow mine.
If you look at D fifteen, it's one fifty dash five, D fifteen. It discusses the selling, vending, conducting commerce, commercial transactions on park property or park facilities. It says, it, you know, that is not allowed unless specifically approved by permit of the village board of trustees. That's what that is. So farmer's market, we want to do this. Village Board of Trustees says, have a good time. And they give a permit. That's what that means.
And to be specific, seventy-five, or exceptions in alcoholic beverages, chapter seventy-five, section four. Notwithstanding a provision of this chapter, consumption and possession of lawful alcoholic beverages such as beer, wine, and ale are permitted within the specifically designated picnic area of Kelly Park. And also within the Kelly Park Pavilion area by special permit issued by the village board of trustees. And part of the problem with that sentence is that you can't tell if the permits attached to designated picnic area also, or just pavilion area. So it was poorly written.
So that's in a completely different law.
Yeah. So what, what, if you, yes. And if you look in, that's kind of why we have in there, chapter one fifty-three. If you look at section fifteen, we talk about chapter one fifty-three of the code. There was a reason that was put in there, and if I can pull up chapter one fifty-three, because currently part of your code would be inconsistent with that.
That's the peddler's law. So basically
Right. So the peddler's
For the owner's licensing, yep.
Right.
So what law is the pavilion law?
That's in chapter seventy-three.
Seventy-five.
Seventy, seventy-five dash three and seventy-five dash four will have to be repealed under a separate local law to make sure that it's not inconsistent with this law. But because this law is before you in this law, it says, in the event that this is inconsistent with chapter seventy-five, this law will go up just because of time.
So what's the inconsistency that we need to repeal?
That right now you can have alcohol in Kelly Park.
So we're going to say with a permit, we're saying no alcohol ever.
It's unclear writing, Ben, because again, the special permit attaches without any indication to only one half of the full clause there. And so I could argue that in the picnic area, it's allowed by norm without special permit. So if, if, if the intent was to ban it from picnic areas, it was badly written.
So, okay. So, all right. So there's that, something, you know, future business. This one, this fifteenth or sixteen fifteen, I guess. Selling, vending, etc. Approved without, you know, specifically approved by permit of the village board of trustees. I'm assuming those beer garden alcohol events are selling alcohol, correct? So does that mean that the village board will see?
That's what I'm trying to say. I think there's coverage there because they're going to be attached to an event. These events aren't just going to happen, you know, they, they would have to. I think it's just that approval process or permitting process, excuse me. There's approval for the event, which is a whole separate thing. Farmers or BSBPA could say, we're going to have a movie night, but we want to have maybe concerts, concerts is a better fit. Not movie, movie nights, kids movies, but concert night, maybe they want to have, somebody would like to have a beer garden. The event would be approved by us. Then we'd have this permitting process that says you're allowed to do this so long as X, Y, and Z, you get a permit from the clerk. But you have also met the requirements of the state. So it's not like our eyes aren't going to be on this and on the, the application. Do you intend to? That I don't see why we're going to have that, just so we're aware.
That was very unclear to me. And I'm wondering if under this B where it talks about the alcohol, if we say in order to obtain permission to, you know, have an event, you must get permission from the village board for the event through the event process, permitting process, and go to the clerk and get these other things. Because otherwise, it's really not clear.
Well, if I could just pop in there, actually, section fifteen contemplates that because states other than as set forth in section one fifty-six below. That's the alcohol and permits section. So fifteen is for everything else.
Oh, so it's not.
It's, yeah.
That was in my comments across, and sit back when we were doing the Google Doc comments back when.
We're, wait, we're, other than as
Other than as set forth in section one fifty-six. So
So I would
The one fifty-six, the alcohol part, and the idea there, my understanding is that was for like the beer gardens for the restaurants or what have you, not for a concert with alcohol. Not to say that that can't happen, but that would happen in the way you were put, you would present it for that. They, they would want the event, plus they get the alcohol permit. If they just want to have the beer garden, that's not an event, that's the alcohol permit.
So I would suggest we don't want to make an exception of alcohol involved events, that we want to have eyes on that. I'm okay going the other way with it, where we don't look at everything else that is low risk and has happened a million times. But I don't see the, I don't see, I guess I'm, I don't agree with making the alcohol events an exception where the board doesn't see them. We see everything else, but not those.
Carla, is this a manageable process that's consistent across the board in terms of possible landmines in, you know, concerns for you from the legal perspective?
It's, it's one a manageable process. There's been a lot of processes talked about.
The, the overall use of park stuff for people that want to go above and beyond just walking through with their kids and, you know, enjoying the park type situation. For anybody holding an event or a special event, do you feel like this is manageable in this manner?
I, I, I don't know, because I don't work in the village office. I have no idea.
Terry, what's your thought?
Can you rephrase the question? I'm confused.
Yeah, thank you.
Overall, based on what we're saying here in terms of what we're forcing through the board and what we're not forcing through the board for approvals. Do you feel this process is manageable and consistent across the board in terms of the things that it's trying to ensure that we have oversight on and or making sure we're not being onerous in the process of allowing people to have usage of the park?
Yes, I think, yeah, I think it's manageable.
One more thing I'd like to add, and I, I'm not familiar with the permitting form. But is there any documentation where, particularly if we're going to have other departments like police and DPW that they've reviewed what the event's going to be and they provide what they need to contribute to that event? And essentially sign off that, yes, I can do this. And yes, I approve this event. It would be really good to have documentation that they were made aware of the event and they've signed off that they're comfortable with the event and what they're going to provide.
Let me answer it two ways. I believe the new form that we started utilizing with Carla's help has some indication of that. But even if it didn't, we're going to be making a new form set at this point to embrace the current law that once passed. And so we'll make sure it does because it's going to have to be consistent with the schedule. And the schedule probably will be connected directly to the form. So people have what the schedule is right in front of them when the form is being filled out.
And I would hope it would also include if they are going to provide services, an estimate of the cost of those services would be on that documentation.
For
For police or DPW.
Well, you guys have a safety plan meetings between the police chief and the fire department chief, you know, and whoever the applicant is. I know BSBPA does it and, you know.
Well, the Darul and Ashanti concert is part of that event there last year. Red flagged it very easily for us so that we basically did have the safety plan meeting with the organizers. We indicated how many police we needed to have on overtime that they would be picking up the costs and we wouldn't approve it until they agreed to that. So that was an instance where absolutely it flagged itself very easily and we made sure that was handled in that situation.
Can, can we agree to take out the exception for alcohol? Like take out that phrase other than as set forth in fifteen, one fifty-six? And if we're still involved with reviewing permits for use, include the alcohol piece. I don't see a reason.
You're in a conundrum there, Ben, because if they're not going to give the permit until twenty-four hours before an event and we are basically mandating that they have that certificate, the meetings and the approval aren't going to meet in time for each other.
What we could do is, is issue, you know, a, a conditional permit, a conditional approval based on their obtaining that SLA. So we can still, we'd still see it. We still have answers, questions answered, just like with every other event. And it's okay if, if that state license isn't there, we'll say that it's, you know, pending, just like we do with other events, like pending insurance provision and things like that. So it, I think it's manageable that way. I just, I just don't see the logic in making an exception of alcohol related events.
Well, the reason is because no other permitted activity we're doing here goes to the state of New York, which has a rigorous process.
It's, you know, it's still, I mean, it's still our we have the knowledge of the, of village resources, the space use, those kinds of things. It's not going to be settled at the state level. And I just feel more comfortable reviewing it, like, just like with everything else. I don't know. What other people think?
I don't see it in any other municipality. I'll be honest with you. Because they too, if they're allowing alcohol in special events are leaning on the state to give that approval because those approvals are extraordinarily tough to come by.
I would just add that based on public comment in the hearing, I think the public would be also would want us to have a higher level of review for alcohol related events. So I think, I think what Ben mentioned is, you know, conditional approval pending receipt of, of the license to serve alcohol. I, I don't think that's going to hold anybody up. We're essentially approving as long as they get all their, check all their boxes and get their ducks in a row.
And it's not even higher approval. It's just the same approval. It's consistent approval. Well, then what, what's proposed now would be higher.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't see any drawback to that.
Again, it, it, there's a drawback in timing that you're going to have a real hurdle if you're trying to put together these events. We, and I, I told you before, we've had events that go and add vendors to the last second, basically. And so last, you know, a couple of days. And they do not line up to the village board meetings. And are we going to have a special meeting every alcohol event?
No, but you're, you're referring to events that have no alcohol. That's Family Fun Day and it doesn't, it doesn't
Could have alcohol technically if it wanted to. Mike could go out and vend on that event if he so chose.
The, the, the timing issue is the same for every event. And as I mentioned in the email, you know, adding a vendor doesn't change the nature of the event. It's, it's okay to approve an event with certain parameters. Even if knowing that they continue to add vendors or continue to, you know, make tweaks. That's okay. Because they're going to have the date of the event, you know, weeks or months ahead. There should be plenty of time to review the outlines of the events. I mean, we have, we're doing this for, I guess, for every other kind of event. I'm just saying, let's include, let's wrap alcohol into that.
Frank. Look at fifteen, whatever. Do you know what I'm talking about? The vendor section. One fifty-six.
Fifty-five, D fifteen.
Right.
Take out, other than as set forth in section one fifty-six below. That will allow the village board the opportunity to approve the alcohol, everything by permit. What this board could do then is, you know, everybody has to get the approval. This board, they have to at least tell, if you look at one fifty-six, fifty-six, they have to they have to at least submit the application for the alcohol use at least thirty days beforehand. You could change that to forty-five days if you want to, to allow for them to come to the village board and say, we've applied to the SLA, we're waiting for this. We've met everything else. If we get the SLA form, is this approved? Then per Ben, what Ben was saying, it would be a conditional approval. They come in, they submit the, the SLA permit. You're not reviewing everything again. You're just allowing the village board to look at it. I think it'll make the board comfortable and make the public comfortable. It does, it, you know, Terry still gets it and says, okay, yep. This box is now checked. She checks that and then you're off to go. And then you could do that for a year, see how it works. If it becomes too cumbersome, you can always amend the local law. It's not easy, as you can tell, but you can do it. And, and I think that might
It's not easy. It's organizing events and having the foresight always to know what you're going to be serving or doing at those events and vendors that we're getting. And part of, the other part of what we came into with this law, why we're doing it is because we have essentially a weirdness going on with peddler's laws, with events generally, etc., where we go up to two weeks before the day of an event and essentially nobody knows. You know, essentially to go out to the clerk, the board, or what to do and what the nuances are for what they're going to be serving. So it's going to be a real challenge to be able to, I think, for a lot of people, get the event that they're envisioning together with some of the things that we're trying to re-hurdle at that point. So that's, that's my concern.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, but to in one fifty-six, dash six, excuse me. You're, there's that thirty day notice though. The, the thirty day in 156, dash six, excuse me, you're, there's that 30 day notice though. The, the 30 day process that they have. So.
Yeah, there's times, there's same time for them as everyone else, at least as much because they, they have this other state thing to do. They're going to have to know, they're going to have to start way ahead. And I, if we're.
Hold on, we, we, we've got to be clear what this is saying. This is stating simply that an event's going to have alcohol. Whether or not an individual vendor is going to be bringing on or multiple vendors can be brought in for that situation. I don't see that being akin to each other here. Basically, an event organizer is going to say whether or not there will be alcohol. And then it's going to be up to a vendor to obtain a permit at that point. And so they may not be directly associated with that event per se. Let's say BSBPA want to do farmer's market and Mike, and they say, yes, we, we intend to have alcohol. Mike at Real McCoy says, hey, I, I'm going to be a vendor here, I, I guess, with a couple of weeks to go before because they went out and discussed it with him, coming on board, be the vendor for alcohol for it. And so it doesn't necessarily meld that you're automatically going to know right away that that person is going to be the vendor of that alcohol because that's not what this is saying. 150 dash six B.
Think you need that though. I don't think that they would necessarily need to know that at the time of when they bring, coming to us. You know what I mean? Like if we just say the intent is to have alcohol. If there are going to be vendors involved, you have to go through this process. You must be attached to an event. I think that's, I think there's a way to kind of do both. You know what I'm saying? I, and I understand like we don't know what vendors are going to participate, but I think the question is, I think we are able to know ahead of time if there's alcohol. If said group is going to have alcohol, wherever they get to participate, they say, okay, the village has this process and the state has this process. You must go through it. And that is covered in the code, this written code.
Carl, I don't agree that just deleting that first clause works though for 15. I, I think that you actually have to keep that in and then specify it in 150 dash six because I don't see how there's no reference back at that point. There's no cross-reference between those two sections. So they would become inconsistent without something more in 150 dash six.
I would respectfully disagree. Because if you're looking at 15 and you take that section out, if I, is anybody who wants to get a permit or wants to do this event without alcohol, they go and they do, you know, they go through and get the village permit that approved by permit from the village board trustees. Great, right?
Right.
If they want, if they want alcohol, they also have to go through the special permit. There's no reason that you need to tell them there's a special permit part of it, you know, seven paragraphs down, they will have to know. And maybe that's on the general permit form. You have, do you intend alcohol? Yes or no? If yes, you also must fill out a special application for events. I think it's a compromise and it will work.
I'm, I'm beyond the question of compromise. I was at the point of just how we do it at this point with respect to those two kind of intermingled, whether they like to be or not.
Frank, I thought that was actually the process. The, what, what we're describing right now is actually what I thought, because I started saying, I go, well, they're still going to have to come before us for an event.
Right. But what, where I'm going here is I think there's going to be confusion if we don't word it better than just taking out that one clause. It's going to have to be a re-public hearing anyway, because this is not going to be considered, I would assume, a which we'll call it, help me here, Carla, on this one.
Substantive change.
Yeah, this would be probably considered substantive change or you're changing permitting process for an alcoholic event.
Right?
I mean, most people aren't going to read the law. They'll read the permit instructions. So we just need to make sure, like Carlos saying, we need to make sure that it was clear and consistent with the law.
See, here, here's, here's the pitfall. Somebody reads 15 and doesn't read anything. Basically, this is saying, once you get that permit from the village board, you're okay.
Frank, you're not. The form itself is going to say, do you intend to have alcohol? Yes or no? If yes, you must also do this form. It doesn't, that, people will like, like you've said, people don't read the law, which is why you and I, you know, why I have a job. People don't read the law. They, this way, they'll see the form, they'll check the box or not check the box. They won't just go forth and have alcohol. I, I presume, I'm going to make a presumption on that, but this is your call.
Well, is, is it a substantive change either way?
I, I would say we should put this off till the next meeting. Yes.
Then why don't we just work on the wording to make sure it's crystal clear what the intent is between 15 and six B at that point. The 15, five, D 15 and six B overall, just so that we're, we're consistent in the law itself, not just on the form. If we're going to make a change, we'll make a change entirely.
And, and if, assuming since we're doing, having another shot at this, if there is a permit, you know, quote un, special permit issued by the village or village board, village board of trustees, do we want to make that consistent, you know, one throughout in terms of a permit or approval of the board?
Everything else is fine as is, Ben. We've been through this already. The, the only thing to change here, I think we've come to a conclusion that the alcohol process can be more specified that going to have it, you're going to get a village approval and the clerks can oversee it from there.
Frank, well, Carla, when you say by permit of the village board treaty, is that, is that different than just a motion that we approve? Is that, I mean, we use the word permit over and over. We've never issued a permit by the board before. So I'm just trying to get clarity. It's not like I have a strong opinion one way or the other, but it does seem like it's a new concept. So for example, in, in that 15, you know, it says vending, et cetera, unless specifically it's by permit of the village board. So is that a new thing, a permit versus just approval?
I was told to put that in by, I think it was you, but maybe I was thinking.
I wanted consistency. I might've said, well, if you're doing permit one place, do it throughout, but I, that is. What?
Motion to table.
You make the motion, Frank?
Yes, I do.
Well, I, I have another comment.
Do you have a second, please?
But I haven't, no, I have a, I have something else I'd like to bring up.
No, you can second it.
Can I have something else? I know, but there's something else I want to discuss.
Take it offline, Ben, at this point. It's going to be handled in the next day or two. So if you got a concern.
You've told us in the past, we can't even make changes between meetings. We have to do it at board meetings.
That's not accurate. We've been doing this process as it is sway and I've got a motion to table I'm making.
A second, please.
Well, the, the other piece. All right, now we're going to discuss the motion to table. The, the other piece that.
Thank you, Mary.
All right, the appeals process for denial. That's what I wanted to bring up. I don't know why I'm being censored or gagged. Yes, I am because there's more for me. I wanted to discuss another issue in public.
So Ben, we're specifically.
I want, I had another issue that I wanted to discuss.
Is it relating to specifically to the law?
It was. Yes. It was about the appeals process and there is no appeals process. I wanted to bring that up. So I was within order. I was not out of order to say I have another issue to discuss about this law, which is under discussion.
Why don't you discuss it in email? I don't recall you bringing it up.
I, I thought of it recently.
We had a lot of good discussion in email.
You know what? It's funny because in previous board meetings, Bernadette, when we talked about the ethics law, we asked you, why haven't you provided feedback on the ethics law? You said, oh, I only like to provide changes at board meetings for transparency. So it always changes based on whatever's convenient. I wish there was consistency in your positions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion table. I can't even talk. It's tabled. All right.
Wow, railroading is just incredible.
So glad you're, all right.
Did you lose your agenda?
Sorry, I found it. All right. May I have a motion that the village awards the bid related to the DPW garage repairs to Finelli Constructions, Inc. For $117,400.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comment or discussion?
Did we follow the procurement proceed here?
Yes.
I believe the letter actually is in the batch. Sean, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think the letter from La Bella, who reviewed the bids was in the batch.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Mayor's announcements. Frank.
Yeah.
Speaking of procurement and bids, I've got some stuff to talk about here. We're trying to still straighten out with DEC or DOH, I think actually it is, with respect to the John Street Tower situation. However, here's what I can tell you. The low bid for John Street Tower has been opened and come in at $1,012,000. This brings a few things to light and also some things that I think need to get discussed on a grander basis in future meetings, but I want to lay out some things here at this point. In the discussions with respect to the low bidder, they offer maintenance for $26,000 a year with a three and a half percent inflation coefficient to be added to that each year. What you get with that is not just cleaning and inspection each year, which is probably valued at around $5,000, but in year 13, they will recote the entire tower at that point in time. So that basically what you've done is you've renovated the tower, maintained the tower, inspected it, and then fully maintain it when things might start going wrong within it at that point in time. I should also state as an aside, as part of the bid, there was a bid, additional bid component for a corral at the top of John Street Tower for cell equipment to go up there instead of going into or being bolted into the tower, which has caused corrosive effect inside the tower over time. And I see Sean nodding. He knows exactly where I'm going with that, I think. And so we are also working with La Verge here to discuss whether or not we're going to be in a position to get a corral scenario. We are in touch with three out of the four communications companies that are either on the tower or want to be on the tower. Verizon is the only one I don't have direct contact with right now concerning this, but we probably can find that out soon. And we're working with AT&amp;T, T-Mobile and Dish Network on, with the other ones at this point. And so long story short, with respect to that is either the stuff comes off into temporary monopole and gets put back on as part of the $1,012,000 or we'll have an additional spending that'll probably be offset by the carriers themselves for the $150,000. And our agreements probably are due to be renegotiated anyway right now. So that gives us a good opportunity to maximize in that situation. But the long story short for me is this, we know now that it's about $1,012,000. We know that we have two other towers at Colonial Hills and Rollin Street that need to be renovated as well to avoid them becoming seven figure debacles for us here. And the two words I have for the board and for the public tonight are never again. Never again should this happen. I'm not pointing fingers. I'm not going to lay blame beyond saying this was a mismanaged process for way too long and we need to rectify that so it never happens again. And so as part of this, we determined, looking at the valuation of the other two towers being about $500,000 according to La Verge's numbers. And then looking at a $26,000 a year maintenance fee for each of the three towers, if we were to do one this year and two next year, which are, the two next year are obviously less involved than what the John Street Tower presents to us right now. Then we need to find about $170,000 a year in additional water revenue to cover the debt service and the maintenance and all the work that needs to be done for these three towers to basically make them suitable and maintained for 30 years. Now, there's a couple of different ways that can happen. First, we could look at the idea of utilizing hopefully very gradual increases in revenue for the water from essentially our water rates. And we have the Revenue Advisory Committee obviously looking at that. Talked to a couple of the members to let them know what the number looked like with respect to if we were going full bore here to avoid these situations, again, the $170,000 number, which obviously goes up by inflation for the maintenance fees each year. And, you know, they'll figure out what to do with respect to that and what to recommend to the board. But, you know, we did get people coming in even at a 5% increase concerned that it went up the last period. And so you, people watch this and are concerned with their incomes being what they are in our village that, you know, any increases, a large increase to some people. We have to be very, very willing to understand just popping up a certain amount for, you know, a huge debt service we suddenly have to take on might not be the correct answer. So we'll see where that lands ultimately. The other side could be Milltown in town of Milton, which could be around a $200,000 revenue source for water. There is an ongoing discussion and debate going on between the Sam and Scott folks, Heritage Springs, the water provider, other water provider in Milton, in that zone and the village as to who should be providing water at the Milltown complex if it is approved ultimately. And so right now, not knowing where that's going to land and trust me, La Bella is by our side here every step of the way right now. Discussing with Delaware Engineering, the implications of not going with the village and what that means because there was a water service district already formed that included that land that we provide water for, namely, right now, the heritage, the Hannaford Plaza up there. But that land before it was subdivided was all in this water service district. The point being that we don't know for sure where it's going to go yet. So right now we have to plan, assuming the worst case scenario, that we don't get the water provision there. I'm hoping that's wrong fully, but you know, just in case, we've got to make sure that we're ready, that we take this situation, learn from what happened because a million dollars is way too much. It's a lot of wasted money at the end of the day. And make sure it never again to the village and to the folks that have to basically foot the bill, which is our water users and our village taxpayers. So that's what we've got right now. I'm going to have a lot more information as we finish up things with La Verge here and with the DOH. And we'll have probably, if I had to guess, the next meeting, similar to what we did with the Finelli approval for the DPW garage and approval to accept the bid, low bid for this as well. So there's that. I also want to bring up that other bids or situations that are out there. We are still waiting and Sean, I, I, I got to be honest with you. I had some choice words about DOT this morning when I was talking to Joe Lanero. Because we are still awaiting some comments, not just on the apron, the fire house apron at Union Firehouse from DOT. They had given us some, I guess, incorrect comments from what they provided. And so they're retracting some of those comments. We are still also apparently La Bella is trying to make sure we had bids that seemed out of sync. And so they're trying to confirm that the low bid is an apples to apples scenario right now. So once they're able to do that, we will get more information about what we are being recommended to approve bid wise. I will tell you that the lowest bid was in the seventies, even though we were talking about the fifties back when, because prevailing wage is wearing its head here, but the other bids were in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so you can see the disparity causing some confusion on the bid process there. And so La Bella is working there to figure that out. But also the Crosswalk at Church Avenue, still, we do not have comments and approval from DOT. And I'm going to be reaching out to Guy Tedesco, I believe, later this week to just kind of see what's going on, what can we do to assist here? Because I reached out to him once already and asked him to nudge it along. And apparently they just have not nudged it internally. I, I know, Sean, there's been a lot of turnover at DOT. I know it's, it's been an interesting scenario over there personnel wise. And hopefully we can kind of pop out, which would be a pretty easy approval from them, you know, in time to be able to do this early in the spring. So this is once and for all done. That crosswalk on Church Avenue that by Rosewood Court, et cetera, over there. So there's that as well. Finally, I had a meeting where Supervisor Connolly of town of Ballston, representatives from the Sheriff's Department and Emergency Management from the county attended about the Kesselring site, which is the nuclear site, the naval site that is basically down the road a piece from us, but that impacts us because the only rail spur they can utilize to, for their decommissioning, recommissioning activities is essentially. the only rail spur they can utilize for their decommissioning recommissioning activities is essentially the one that is by Eastern Avenue. And that is really daunting for a lot of people when this starts to happen. So let me break down what's about to happen. And there's going to be a lot more on social media and letters to the community, and we're going to do some door-to-door. I've asked them to join us on door-to-door, going around to warn the most impacted property holders, what's going on, or residents, what's going on, you know, before this, and if they have any questions, they can get them answered in real time in that situation. But they are going to be defueling one of the two reacts, or two test sites up there that they have, I should say. And what that means is essentially they're taking out of service. From what I understand, they've been using more of a virtual testing site as the second site now. And that's probably some wave of the future of what they'll be doing generally. So they're taking out one of these sites entirely. And here's what entails, bringing a container, and it's only a single container in this case, through to the rail spur and offloading onto a truck and slowly, like about three miles per hour slowly, driving that thing after they get it locked into place on an oversized load truck to the Kesselring Site. That'll be happening sometime in the May 2024 timeframe. They'll get more specific when they're able to in the next month or so, they stated. Then, over the next year, over at the Kesselring Site, they will take apart the test site that they have there and any of the nuclear material, et cetera, that they're decommissioning, put it into the container, and they will basically reverse the process in give or take summer of 2025 to take it back through the community in the slow way with a convoy of law enforcement and federal agencies, et cetera. Get it back to the part of the rail spur to get it set up to move it to, essentially, I think Montana or Idaho, I think it was, Idaho, in fact, I think it was, where they will handle it there. So it's a very, very involved, slow process with safety being, you know, primary in every way, shape, or form. So that is coming up. Again, we're going to have a lot more about that to the neighbors that we were naming streets that they didn't necessarily have, like Kayleen Last Go Around, that they need to be aware of to get the word out. And so we're going to assist in that process all the way, because obviously, it's daunting, but it's safe and it's just a part of, you know, having the Kesselring Site in our area, a very necessary part of the federal government. But they are very, very interested in making sure that our residents are comfortable with what's going on at all times. And so we appreciate that from them. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Frank, can you put some of those numbers in writing that you mentioned in the early part of your announcements? Or will they be forthcoming with a report?
We'll be getting a lot more. I broke it down for you tonight, and so we'll get to more.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the treasurer's report, water and sewer bills were delivered to residents on February 1st. A lot of the payments have already been coming in. Just want to remind folks that make sure you get your payment in before March 4th to avoid any penalties. The January sales tax distribution in the county in January was $106,681, one up, 100,000, can't talk, oh my goodness, 106,681. Oh goodness, total January sales receipts were about 16 million. It's up from, it's about by about 1.26% from last year. The year-to-date was up by over 10.4 million in the sales tax. And then Rebecca Little has accepted her full-time position. She wears many hats for us in the village. She is Deputy Treasurer, Deputy Clerk, Deputy Clerk of Vital Statistics. And Melissa reports that she is really doing a good job and plugging in well and is just a real asset to the village. The mayor met with Chris Hunsinger with Melissa to discuss USDA financing for the Thompson Street Building, reading some documents from the engineer as well as some reports from LGSS, so we can move forward. Additionally, we have budget to look forward to. Melissa's gonna, they're going to do some budget development in the next few weeks, and we'll get some scheduling done soon. And also, bank reconciliations for the month of January have been completed. That's the treasurer's report. Lee, is on support, please.
I had a question about the budget. Sorry if I missed it, or will those funding request forms be going out to nonprofits?
We'll be doing identically what we did last year, and those will be going out hopefully while I'm away, actually. And so we'll also be scheduling up department meetings to discuss those requests as well when I get back.
So the nonprofit should expect those, those forms done next week?
Means, yes, Ben.
All right.
Okay. All right, Mayor's on reports. Ben, start.
Arts Committee met last Wednesday. They are working on streetlight banners. Hopefully, they will wrap that up the next month or so. They're also working on trashcan size of the SVPa. They have some neat activities planned. They are trying to set up exhibitions with businesses, the SVPa businesses. They've got about 15 businesses, and they're looking for artwork. They're trying to work with the, the school system to get student artwork in local businesses. And if anyone is connected to art students, please have them contact the village to, to make that connection. Because you could have an exhibit potentially.
It's actually a part of a stakeholders' meeting with the high school a couple of weeks ago with Principal Robinson. And some of the members are merchants that are in this stakeholders group, and this actually got brought up. And so there's a discussion already going on to make better connections between the village and the high school, including the businesses in that manner that you're talking about. So they're aware of it as well over there. And so I'll continue to pursue that on that end. And the Arts Committee probably should be doing the individual outreach to the different teachers, et cetera, department heads over there. And we'll work in concert with that kind of inside scoop and ability we have now over the high school.
Great, thanks for sharing that. They're also working on something called Random Acts of Poetry. April is Poetry Month. And they're working again with local businesses to share poetry and promote poetry. They're going to have some events at Brookside Poetry Reading. I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately, the Tate's. But I'll have it for next. Do you have it?
Why do you keep talking? I'll look for it. Send my notes.
They're also, they know it's budget time. They're working on budget for next, next year. And their next, they meet the first and third Wednesday of the month. Their next meeting is February 21st, 7:00 PM, in this room, the library.
So regarding Random Acts of Poetry, April 13th, they're looking to do a poetry class, I believe, at the library here. 20th, they're gonna, they're looking to figure out where to have it, but have an open mic poetry reading and sort of poetry slam. And then on the 27th, a reading from a professional poet. On Brookside.
Thank you.
Mayor, oh, do you have more?
Park and Tree Board, I could. They are, Park and Tree Board is working with Studio A to update their, the Wiswall Park Plan and to get the second draft, and they're waiting for that, and they're looking forward to it. And once they have it, they will share it with the board and the public and get hopefully get a good positive feedback on that. They're also discussing options for Arbor Day tree planting celebration. They're going to plant a tree, and they also would like to help educate the public on proper tree planting here and maintenance. So they're going to come up with some activities around that. Caitlin says, on the subject of tree planting, you want to remind everybody that it's never too early to start planning a spring, or planning street spring tree planting. If anyone is thinking about planting a tree this spring, please reach out to Park and Tree Board, discuss the approved tree list for the village, and to help narrow down the ideal tree for your specific planting location. So just to clarify, trees need to be approved if you're planting them in the right way or, you know, around your sidewalk, between sidewalk and street. You can plant whatever you want, your own property, but there are recommended varieties that will do better and that make, might make more sense for your property, and they have experts who can consult with you on that.
Thank you.
We probably should add about a tree that got taken down. It's a highly visible tree in our community. The tree by the White House that is now no more. And for those that know or were concerned about why it's gone, unfortunately, one morning, and I drove by that day and saw woodchips kind of in the roadway, and I'm like, what the heck happened? And Jeff happened to be in the office, and a beverage distributor truck hit into it. And essentially, it was so weakened as it was, it basically fell down into the cab area of the truck. And luckily, DOT has some crews that were nearby that could help assist getting it out of there, and that is why that tree is gone now. And so it was one of the ones that was causing heaving. There's no doubt about that. And so we'll be taking a look at what to do next with respect to the stump that's there and how to handle the next steps with the sidewalk. But that was not a decision by the village. That was a, an accident from a distributor truck that unfortunately hit into it one morning last week.
Thank you. And the next meeting of the Park and Tree Board is Tuesday, February 20th, 7:00 PM, at the Cornell Cooperative Extension Conference Room.
Okay. Lots of trees. Mayor?
Dan Bertrand concert was fantastic. This was there, and it was enjoyed by two-year-olds, up to, you know, 22-plus-year-olds. There were about 40 people there. It was for the Capitol campaign for the library. And weather permitting, I think it's supposed to be clear tomorrow. They're going to be having their board meeting. They're planning lots of, you know, they've got a lot of things in the works as far as policies and other ideas for fundraisers.
So so DPW, today, trees at Colonial Hills and Greenfield Ave have been cut down. And they're currently waiting digs, safe locate tickets to dig out stumps and shrubs. Repairs to plow trucks and equipment is substantially done. Pre-wiring of two new trucks for two-way radio installs is being completed. Chemical feed tubing replaced at Treatment Building. And as found out earlier, Pumpno Storm Drainage Project is substantially complete. There are some, a few things that are left to wrap up there. They also painted some of the trucks and dump boxes and plow frames. Were able to replace one catch basin and repair one. And replace the furnace at the Lowell Street Water Building that, that failed. Coming up in the upcoming week, stump and shrub removal at Colonial Hills. Stop signs upgraded at various locations. DPW Garage Building, they're cleaning and doing some maintenance. And they are continuing to do pothole repair as needed. And also are going to work on the San Souci Well. That's in need of some repairs. One thing that Jeff wanted me to emphatically state to the public was I realized that the past week or so, we had weather that felt very spring-like, and folks were going down to Kelly Park. And actually, some people allow their kids to go in the park, even though it's in the playground, even though it's closed. He just wants to make it very clear that everybody knows that that's closed for the winter months. And there's potential safety hazards and, you know, people should stay out, and certainly, kids shouldn't be in there until it's reopened. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
If I could just for one second, remind me something I should have said earlier about the Colonial Hills tree situation. Those trees were declared dead, the ones that are being removed at the entryways, and this is an opportunity to, it's always been an eyesore scenario in the front main entrance area with those trees and the new sign and everything. And so what we're doing is making it just a lawn area that can be routinely mowed by whoever we award our mowing contract to this year. And we will be replacing trees that we've taken down. Obviously, they'll have to grow a little bit out once we put new ones in. But the objective here was to get rid of dead trees that were dangerous to leave in that situation and just do an overall better improvement to the island up there. And so, you know, along with the sign and that, and we're going to look into possibly some lighting, some solar lighting to the degree we can get light into that area, natural sunlight. We're just trying to improve that zone for that entryway, because it was, I think, long disregarded and residents were not happy about that fact. So hopefully, these changes are meeting their favor, and we'll see where it goes from there.
And BSCPA, they had an amazing chocolate fest. I wasn't barely able to get any chocolate. Sanders said you got some chocolates, so I'm a little, I'm a little jealous. That's, that's where all the chocolate went. Man, the mayor and I went around and just really pleased to see the community filled with so many people. Even though folks might have not been able to get chocolate there, you know, I think there's a lot of feedback from people that attended that, you know, they got familiar with businesses that they didn't really know were here, and people want to come back. And that's kind of the whole point of events like that. We want to showcase our businesses and hopefully get people to shop downtown. Also, thank you to the BSCPA for doing that, but also, they were able to get some really good press for this community, Gazette, Saratogian. Also, TV spa with both Swedish Chef and Night Work Bread, WTEM, which was great. Thankful for also, CTTA, Discover Saratoga and Chambers, they also helped spread the word and share promotions for this. So there's some things that they, you know, are, are going to learn from it. It's always tough to know. I know some people are disappointed for no chocolate, but you never know. The weather was good, and that was really part of the reason why I think it was a packed event. The annual meeting, put this down on your calendars, will be March 18th. So save the date, location to be announced soon. And they just wanted us to know that they're also scheduling all the concerts for the year and then working on plans for the moves in the park and farmer's market. So just congratulations to them. All right.
I'm sorry, there's, there's one more thing I could share. The Friends of the Catoros is going to have their annual meeting Monday, March 11th at Brookside. And so all are invited to attend that. And they're doing an annual review and I assume planning for next year. So that's March 11th, Brookside, it's a Monday.
Okay. All right, old business, Switz Hollow Status, Carlo sent us a memo. You have more?
You were grabbing, right? Well, because I just wanted to update the public, if that's okay.
Yeah.
As to what's going on, because I know it's, it's been pretty quiet. So we are in the process of going through the alienation process. We are in contact with Representative Walsh and Senator Tedesco's office, who have both agreed to be our sponsors, the village's sponsors for the home rule legislation. There's a specific process you go through. We're going through it. We're talking with their offices. We're talking with State Parks. We're talking with State DC. We're talking with the Town of Milton. As recent as last Thursday, we had a conference call, Matt in my office and I had a conference call with the attorney for the town, going through all of these things. We've got it set that as we move forward, the alienation bill are done at the second, like the last two weeks of the session, so it'll be in June. We're still on track to make that in June. So you'll be seeing things coming up in the next month or so with respect to Seeker and things of that nature. But the process is moving forward. And, yeah, I just wanted to update, because before people said, hey, what's going on with Switz Hollow? I wanted to kind of get ahead of it.
Thank you. Park Slope Development Process, this is you guys that are interested in this?
Yeah. A lot of of what I was hoping to talk about, we started, we already touched on what just happened where I wasn't allowed to continue to talk, though I do want to talk about how in previous for other laws that the previous board majority wanted to make changes, we were told could not happen between meetings, and we reversed that process where could not happen between meetings. And then we reversed that process where now the public discussions seem to be shut down and we do things more between meetings. I have an email from Frank, August 25th, about the ethics code. It says, Ben, once a public hearing is set, you can't continue tweaking the language. So that's what we've been doing. I've been fine with that, but it needs to be consistent. Another email, May 11th. Majority of the board approved an edit to legislation outside of public meeting, question mark. This is from Frank. I guess we shouldn't even have public meetings anymore. And May 11th about sidewalk law. Last I checked, Ben, you cannot legislate by email the manner you're attempting, which means a text, you know, email between meetings. So just, you know, I just want, I'm pointing this out because there needs to be consistent rules for everybody and regardless of the issue. So if we can make changes to the laws between meetings, even after a public hearing is set. That should have been the case previous earlier. And we actually would have a sidewalk law in place right now if we had been allowed, quote unquote, to do that. But we were shut down. So I don't know why there's been the shift from transparent public discussion of laws to now private emails or, you know, emails behind the scenes. But people should see that, know that that shift has happened. And it has a place. There is a place to have back and forth between meetings and it should be allowed. And what we were told earlier about it not being permitted was clearly false. So I'm glad that we're doing that now. We will hopefully in between meetings address the question of whether there should be an appeal process in the law with the clerk. And then what the permit might be, clarify that piece as well as the alcohol fees. So that's all that I wanted to say. Thank you.
New business, anybody? Nothing? Okay. Public comment on any issue is up. Liz Cormos, three minutes?
Liz Cormos, 89 Hyde. I have a couple of comments on the John Street Water Tower, the low bid. That includes a promise to pay them a certain amount of money for maintenance. I just want to make sure when you look at those different bids, you're looking at apples to apples. In other words, you'd almost have to do a net present value, assuming if another company, and I don't know what the other bids are, but it
That's not what I said. That was not contingent on it. It's a separate piece of the bid. So it's not contingent, but it's a it's a methodology that's been presented as to what the future cost could be for it, just so you're aware of it. Okay?
So it is apples to apples.
Correct. That's why they break out the bid process. The way they do, LaBerge is expert at doing this stuff and that's who's been managing this process.
Okay. Second thing is on the water in the middle of town. I was at their meeting that that group that has concerns had last week. And the head of the planning board made it pretty clear that they're going with, with heritage. And that contradicts what I heard, you know, months ago, that heritage doesn't have, you know, the capacity that we have and that we were going to get that deal. And now, at least from that meeting, it doesn't look like it. And that is a significant amount of revenue, which, you know, frankly, we're counting on to help pay for the John Street Water Tower. So I don't know what is transpiring because I'm not in the government anymore, you know, to try to recoup and get us providing the water because that project by all accounts is going to happen. Because it's under their zoning code. So they might get a few tweaks, but it's going to happen. And the last thing was that I was trying to recollect that, that the mayor had, had said something about doing a state of the village presentation. And I was looking back through the meetings, you know, when did he say that? Well, it turns out he said that January 2nd at the organizational meeting and that that would be done the next week. And I looked, I haven't seen anything about, you know, presentation about the state of the village. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Right?
Ray out in 16 Middlebrook Ave. If I could, I'd like permission to have about a minute to discuss village business. I'm not counting against my time because I need to, we don't have a time slot or a liaison for the events committee. And we have a couple of things going on that involve the village. First is the Easter egg hunt is going to be March 23rd. Hang on, I want to make sure I hit the date right. Oh, I'm sorry, March 29th. I knew I got it wrong. It will be at the Milton Community Center. And right now it looks like it's going to be 11 to one.
Great. March 23rd was right, I think, from what I'm
Like I said, March 23rd. I'm old. Give me a break. It will be 11 to one and everybody's welcome. There'll be lunch served, probably the hot dogs and that kind of stuff. Bag of chips, whatever we can get. We're working on the finalization of the plans and all that stuff that's needed for that. Also, the Birdhouse Festival doesn't look like it's going to happen anymore with some things that have come up. And there is a lot of lumber that's still available that we're working with Doug Ford and Curtis Lumber to possibly use for another, another program. So as soon as we have more details on that, we will let everybody know. Now I'll start mine, if I may. Got two, two suggestions. I've talked to some folks and they seem to think they're not, not bad. We've done a lot of talking about the parks and parks are important to this village as are trees and all the other green stuff. One of the things that we don't do is we farm out a lot of the work for those parks. We hire an outside firm to cut the grass in all those big areas. We depend on volunteers to clean them up in the spring to plant flowers and all this other stuff. We, we depend on volunteers to maintain the park in Kelly Park, the kids' park. I think it's about time that we sort of took hold of that. And all we would need is a part-time person about eight months a year, maybe working 20 to 30 hours a week to mow the grass, to make sure the weeds are pulled, make sure it's cleaned up, make sure the wood is all out of the pathways and the limbs are away from where they're supposed to be. All that good stuff. Painting the, the stuff that needs to be maintained in the parks. Last year, we, you know, the Lions painted the balusters down in the park at their expense. We need to take, as a village, we need to take charge of that, I feel. As do a few others and not depend on volunteers all the time. Us volunteers are getting old. Okay. We can't always do what we would like to do. The Tedesco Trail, all that kind of stuff. We can hire a part-time person, eight months a year to maintain the parks. And be out there. We would have to buy a zero-turn mower. And maybe another small mower to help out and maybe some other tools. But I'm sure they've got some tools at the garage. You know, maybe we can look into that, hiring somebody. And no, I don't want the job. But I think we could do that. And I think it would be a reasonable amount of money each year to do that included in the budget. We've got the budget coming up. So that's something we ought to look at.
Right. One thing I want to point out discussion is that currently, a position like that would fall under DPW, I would think. And part of the problem is that the current contract does not embrace part-time workers on an official basis very well. And their contract expires at the end of this fiscal year essentially. And it's part of the ongoing discussion about how we handle, obviously, you know, what we can afford in terms of any contract changes with wages, et cetera. And benefits, that'll affect some of the calculus there, but also what to do with part-time help or apprenticeships or something like those things. Whether or not we can embrace some of the next contract, because that's been the conundrum. I agree that, you know, the idea of having a part-time DPW-type worker would be nice from time to time. But it's not always feasible by what's allowed inside the labor contract that we have with them. So it's not a strange discussion point at all. It's just, I'm not really enabled to do that right now as a mayor to go down that road with our folks to, to make that happen. We'll see where we can land at the end of this contract discussion.
And maybe we open it up to a full-time position and make other uses for that person for the other three or four months.
And that's, that's a thought. But again, the calculus depends on what we end up with in the wages and the benefits there too.
Okay.
Forty-six seconds. Good times then.
All right. He was talking.
Yeah, I paused it. I paused it.
The other thing is, we've had in the past year, we've lost two mayors, previous mayors from this village. And Jim Capasso and Bert Brandon. And for those that don't know, we also lost his wife this past week. Bert's wife. They were married, I don't know, 70 years, some, some huge amount of years. And we've fallen away from recognizing those folks that have given a lot of service to this village. And by recognizing, I mean, yeah, we did, we did the Romano Trail. We've got Wiswall Park named after a guy that nobody here has ever heard of unless you read the history books or your name is John Cromer. You know, we don't know who these people are. Who's Kelly that Kelly Park is named after? Those are important people for each generation. Now we have to keep up with that. We need to look at areas that we can dedicate to these people that have given such service to the village and see what we can do to recognize them and honor them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have opportunities definitely coming up, Ray. And I've been thinking about that as well. So I actually want to discuss that with you in the future.
Absolutely.
Okay. Keith?
Louis 38 East Tife Street. I've been listening to the village meetings again during some documentation. And Woods Hollow was one of the things that I listened closely to. And I want to remind the board as you get ready to execute a contract with Milton that the agreement for the lumber was set 18 months longer than the agreement that was signed. And the board voted on the agreement that was 18 months longer and approved that. But the contract that was signed was not approved by the board. It was not brought up again. It was not mentioned at any point. And I don't believe, unless I'm ignorant on something, I don't believe that the mayor can make the decision to just commit to a contract, especially one with a material change as large as that. Also, during the conversations about Woods Hollow, the figure of $160,000 was the final figure that was put out for what the lumber would generate, $160,000. So although later on it began being morphed to a different figure, $160,000 was what was discussed as the final figure that was reported back. And the other thing is that the 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 contract terms were set in order for the lumber to be taken out when the ground was frozen. And Frankie made a big point of saying it needed to be done when the equipment would not damage the park. And then by shaving off 18 months, you eliminated much of those winter months. And there was a discussion then in Bay about how he was committed through the summer and you couldn't get it done. So there's these, these conflicts that are going on between the discussions. But the bottom line is that this board is going to have to approve a $75,000, which is 100% penalty to the vendor that committed to take out the lumber. You're going to pay them 100% for only marking trees, which was an arbitrary figure that I'm told they didn't need.
Your thumbs up. Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right. So other business? I don't have any.
Just, just to address Liz's comments about Milltown. I said this in mayor's announcement. She must have missed this and missed it during the meeting that she attended and I was at as well. But the fact is that Chairman Barto referenced the extreme possibility from his information at that time with respect to who was applying to be the water purveyor, purveyor of Milltown. In the meantime, in the background, we've been working with the town itself, Delaware Engineering and Labella to discuss some of the issues that exist with respect to a already existent water service district that we supply water to and the fact that the Milltown land was pre, previously inside an entirety of 60 acres that was part and parcel of where the Hannaford Plaza is as well. That was created by the Bogosians. And I had subsequently spoken with Tom Bogosian, who is the person that had sold it over to Sam Skye with his brother Bruce. And they had gone through an entire process with the village with respect to creating Water Service District number three with the Village of Boston Spa, John Romano at the time. And it was their intent to have the village be the provider for Water Service District number three. The land was subsequently subdivided in 2000. We learned from our friends up at the real property department in the county. And thanks to them for assisting and doing a little bit of the history research on this for us. And so, long story short, Delaware reached out Friday to have a discussion with Labella that I'm going to be a part of to talk about consolidation of water districts, which is where we started with a lot of this last year. But I, they admitted that there's this Milltown situation that's got to be discussed. And I basically put the predicate before the subject, I guess, when I responded to say, we're not going to go to consolidation until we get thorny issues like these resolved. Because there's clearly confusion from the engineers in the first place with respect to who is supposed to be serving water to Service District number three in its entirety. And so when I get back, we're going to be having that discussion. And eventually consolidation is supposed to embrace existing water service provision areas for Heritage Springs, the village, the Rowland Water System, and also Saratoga Springs. Those are the four providers of water besides people with wells inside the town of Milton. So there is still a lot of discussion to be had here and we're having that discussion. And we have our engineers working with this to sort of beat back some of the initial stuff. And I have raised objections to the fact that Water Service District extension was asked for, for an already existing water service district. And we never received any notice of that fact. And so I've raised that issue as well. So there's a lot to be said going forward and it's far from over in that respect. However, as we're doing financial planning, you have to do a worst-case scenario plan. And that's what I was saying earlier, just in case something goes wrong in that respect. Let's figure out how to make sure our water performance inside of our towers is managed correctly for the next 30 years. And never again have the issue of a million-dollar water tower renovation.
And just, I flagged that to Frank early in the process because I'm also on the Milton plan. I know I've seen you at our meetings. They, the applicant came before the planning board and had said, we're using village water. And then a month later at the next meeting, they're like, it switched to Heritage Springs. So you know, the mayor's been working in the background on it. It's, it's been on the radar and it's trying to get the right paperwork in order and getting the engineers to talk. So anyone else on the board?
Yeah, I was just, based on some emails regarding Woods Hollow. Is it my understanding that the town of Milton has performed an environmental assessment of Woods Hollow? And is that document available for review?
Yes and yes. I got it Friday afternoon from their attorney. And I asked their attorney today if, when the board asked me, can I give it to the board? And he said, yes. If, when the board asked me, can I give it to the board? And he said, yes.
Okay, great.
Ford, anybody else? Move ahead. Um alright, there's no executive session needed, correct? And um uh may I please have a motion that the vouchers be audited and then meeting insurance at nine eleven?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I have a question about an app, the hashtag, is that where it can be?
I'll second.
Yeah, thank you Frank for your discussion. What was your question?
Um it looks like there was a charge for one thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars fifty-six cents for Elon in January. I'm just wondering what that was. For?
I I don't know if we had a uh a old legacy bill, then we can check on that for you.
Alright, and um it looked like there was two hundred and ninety-five dollars ninety-nine cents attributed to trustees for a storage cabinet. I don't know that.
It's for that.
Oh, and that's for trustee, we can use that? Okay, great. Um, okay.
It locks, keeps it safe.
Thanks.
So it's less the insurance claim that Jen's gonna make if she has to keep carrying that equipment in and out every meeting.
Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? I hope not. Alright, we're done. Thank you very much, everyone.